We're on? Okay. Let's go. The press in Adel Beach current were notified of this meeting and a copy of same was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and on their municipal website. Meeting will come to order, would you please stand for the flag salute? A pledge in salute by pleasurable reason to the side of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tom, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Becker.
Here.
Blumberg.
Here.
Ms. Talby.
Here.
We have before us our, the minutes of our June 5th meetings. Are there any additions, corrections? What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion when you accept the minutes.
Second. Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Talby.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any public comment? You have three minutes to talk.
Steven Altman, 9003 Amherst Avenue, Margate. I find the regulations that we can only bring up topics not discussed in a work session difficult, and you'll see why in a moment. I would like to have been able to ask the appropriate department head whether the substation, the electrical substation, is progressing and when we can expect that to be online.
Substation is finished. They're just trying to, they'll clean up, but I think it's basically online and finished.
Thank you. The second thing is, is City Hall progressing so that these meetings will be in the old commission room?
That was part of Mr. Blumberg's report. Were you here when he gave that?
I mean, do we know when?
Pardon me?
Do we know when we'll be conducting meetings back in City Hall?
I don't have that date yet, Steve.
Okay. See, that's why it would be great to have it a little more open. I could have asked while Mr.--
That was reported on the first meeting. You could have asked at the first meeting. Ed reported on that about the City Hall.
My mistake.
We're waiting for FEMA to give us the money.
That leads me to my--
Talk about the money.
That leads me to my last point, which is, it's not easy to hear what's going on in here, and I did miss that. I have to be honest. Mrs. Talby, it was so wonderful to have your work notes at the last meeting because I knew what you were, what you were concerned about. Your voice is the voice that carries the least well in this room, and these gentlemen should do something to make that more audible to the audience. And I sincerely suggest that for $2,000 or $3,000, we could have baffles in here for the length of time that this room is necessary for the public to hear what you all have to say. So, that said, oh yes, I'd like to draw your attention to a lovely article by Ms. Nanette Lobiondo-Galloway about long ports looking at expanding Atlantic Avenue parking. All the discussion in her article are points that I've made for, oh, 14 years now, about beach block parking. And I really sincerely suggest that Mr. Blumberg promised about three months ago that he was going to bring forth a resolution, whether it passed or not, you know, it was going to suggest that we truncate the parking restrictions at the beach block, and I would love to see something like that. Just truncate the hours a little bit so the people who may not want to be out at the height of the day in the sunlight could park on the beach block and have their fun on our Margate Beach also, and then move their cars when they go home.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Steve, I just want to apologize. I did miss the boat on that in that I, what I was hoping was that I could time it such that we were making new signs for, we were talking about making new signs for the beach block, you know, better signs than the one we have, and I just was never able to work the timing out with the chief to make that happen. So maybe we can try for next year.
And next year.
Thank you.
By the way, mother was 95 just after Mother's Day this year. We're still hoping to get her to walk down to the beach. Thank you.
Steve, I offer no stands. Don't go there.
You've been a gentleman. The chief has been a gentleman.
I've offered to take Steve's mother to the beach personally for a long time now.
No, I know, but the idea is, she really would love the opportunity to do what she did until she had walking problems, which was to walk down Vendo Avenue and sit on the beach that she used for 50 years. So, thank you, Blumberg, for your consideration.
Dan Gottlieb for 7 North Nassau, just question, did we agree in the last meeting that we need to get a letter out to the DEP and the state? Are we, are we, or the Attorney General? Are we going to try to do that?
I don't remember that.
Okay, I thought Mari brought up the idea of a letter that needs to go out that pretty much reinforces the position that all three of you at one time or another, and some of you more often than not, have said that--
Well, you know, I think it's, I said I thought it was a good idea.
Right.
I don't know if Mike and/or Brenda sees a downside to that. Maybe we can discuss that.
That would be a good idea.
You know, what are the, are there any positives? Are there any negatives to, you know, stating our position, our belief in writing as it relates to, again, maybe, maybe we could pick a couple of key points. Hey, you're in, you're in our town. We haven't invited you into our town. We don't appreciate it, and whatever they might be. So maybe that's something that we could take up at the, you know, with Rich, and then Rich could work with Mike and Brenda. If we could get a letter drafted, not have to wait two weeks for it to happen, I think we could do it without breaking or violating any rules, and see if we have a letter that we like, that we can all agree to, that we want to see go out. Mike, do you, can we try that?
I am very happy to discuss things.
Scott said that, you know, we need a game plan to push for dredging, and it might be a little late in the game, but if 65% of people have told you that they want you to oppose this project as a commission, then I think it's time for, to have a game plan to make the state fully aware that this community has spoken very loudly and very clearly to its commissioners and to its mayor that we do not want this project. And now I think we need that game plan. Part of that game plan is this letter, and Scott, to your own words, game plan to push for dredging. I think sometimes even though it's the mayor's job to give you direction, it's, might be your job sometimes from time to time to advise the commission in such a way that gives them the direction that the voters have, have reached out to give, give them. So I would, I would just suggest that all of you, the three of you, the solicitor, work together as hard as you possibly can to withhold, uphold the will of the vote. Thank you.
Sewell, 22 West Drive. Mari, I would urge you to seek two short sentences in that letter. Number one sentence, we shall seek immediate redress. Second sentence, we shall seek conjunctive relief through the New Jersey Superior Court on Baccarat Boulevard. And Mayor, while we're talking about the Superior Court, did you read the Superior Court thing on June 17th, Mayor?
I did not.
Well, let me fill you in.
Okay, please.
Yes, your duplicitous, dubious accountancy firm in Ocean City where you and your co-defendant, co-conspirator, and cohort went for tutorials, for mentoring. Well, the Superior Court Judge Julio Mendez has ordered the county not to pay the firm for its work auditing the county budget pending the outcome of the case. It seems that your friends over in Ocean City, Mayor, they seem to be greasing the skids with the mother's milk of politics. In fact, it has a set number here, Mayor, $4,600. A tidy little sum for a vanilla envelope. Mayor, did you get any vanilla envelope with $4,600 in it by any chance?
My bag man was busy that day, John.
Oh, well, that's a question, Mayor. How much did Ford Scott donate to your campaign a thousand days ago?
John, would you close your eyes, please?
I'll close my eyes.
And what do you see?
And I'm going to click. I, I'm a visionary, Mayor.
That's what we--
I'm a visionary, Mayor, and you know what Lawrence Overabya said? In Seven Pillars, beware of the man who dreams in the day. And we're dreaming for a fairer operation here. It seems to me that we're dealing with a, a firm that is violating laws because clearly in this article, had you taken time to read it, it says it also prohibits donations above that amount, quote, "to the current holders of any elective county office," end of quote. So I'm very dubious about this law firm, this accountancy firm that we've retained. And furthermore, Mayor, I was extremely disconcerted when we had that $1.3 million bogus contract for asbestos removal. No rod grant for that, Mayor. You know why there was no rod grant for that $1.3 million, Mayor? Any guess?
15 seconds, John.
15 seconds. Answer the question in 15 seconds, if you can, Mayor. Why was there no rod grant for that $1.3 million on that bogus contract?
John, you're--
The answer, Mayor? Answer, Mayor? It's a question.
I don't know, John.
You don't know, and that somehow doesn't surprise me, Mayor. Doesn't surprise me in the least you don't know, because you don't give a flying fiddler's Van Gango.
Had me worried, John.
Pardon, Mayor?
Your time's up, John. Thank you.
Something has to be done because Ford Scott also represents the school board. That's a clear conflict of interest, Mayor. I want to see it resolved, at least before Election Day. Thank you, Mayor.
John, let's wait until that case is resolved, number one. And number, number two, you've been incorrect the entire time. There has been no $1.3 million for asbestos removal. The, there was a rod grant of $2.3 million. Yes, John, and 60% of that is the $1.3 million.
Do you want to bet?
Okay.
The $1.3 million does not, not cover asbestos removal. You want to bet a five spot on that, Mayor?
That's not what, that's not what you said, John. Thank you. Sit down. Anyone else, please? Motion to close public comment.
This is exhausting. Sharon Simon, 424 North Thurlow Avenue. While I don't often agree with Commissioner Talby's opinions, statements, whatever, I do respect her for the fact that she publicly vocalizes her views and doesn't try to play both ends of the stick. If she feels they shouldn't do something, she's very clear about it. And that brings me to this whole issue of Ford Scott and Tom Hiltner and what's going on. There was an article in the, in the press quite a few months ago that lawsuit investigation into Mark Clerk launched at mayor's request. And then it spoke about Scott Jenkins, who's a chief investigator of the State Attorney General's Office, LGCCC, claiming that Jenkins, Jenkins claims that Lehman attempted to use his power to uncover information on Hiltner for Margate Mayor Becker. And what happened was, was Hiltner's attorney has subpoenaed Jenkins to give a deposition January 28th in the, in this litigation. So Becker, Mayor Becker, denied involvement in the allegations in the Jenkins lawsuit, which was filed in February. Okay? He also came in here and said, "Oh, I didn't do this, and I didn't do this, and I did this, and Tom Hiltner made up stuff about me, and he thinks that's the end of it." However, however, Jenkins whistleblower lawsuit alleges Lehman conducted an audit on Hiltner's office in retaliation for filing the lawsuit against the city, which is the pay-to-play for the Ford Scott. He told me to find something and that his orders came from above, quote, Jenkins said, which he said Lehman further explained to me, to mean Becker. Their email exchange, which was forwarded to the press of Atlantic City, shows Lehman stating, quote, "The mayor wants your file. How do I access it?" Question mark. To which Jenkins, who is, who is a, an official, says, responds, "Please have the mayor file a Oprah request through the Division of Consumer Affairs." Lehman replies, "I have to do it for him. How?" Jenkins said at this point that he learned of Hiltner's whistleblower suit. Through his findings, he came to view Lehman's audit request as political retaliation against Hiltner on behalf of Becker. Now, it is no big surprise, it does not take a rocket scientist to see that while Commissioner Talby has been very vocal about the clerk, and there's all this talk now of settlement, we got the Ford Scott issue, and now we got this issue, and that you have said, "Oh, this is nothing," and pushed it in the corner. So Commissioner Talby, if you really believe what you say you believe, that the people in office and the employees should not be involved in such kind of activities, I think you would if you really believed in it, even though it happens to be the mayor, that you would pursue this investigation, this ongoing court case. Because if you really believe what you say you believe, the public should not be voting for someone to be mayor who has political influence or, or investigated or whatever. So you investigate everything else, including a $20 pay cash issue, and Senator Chairman go, "If you mean what you say, show it. Make sure this comes out in public." Thank you.
For the public. She gave me an opportunity. In the lawsuit of Hiltner versus the City of Margate, Mr. Hiltner's attorney, Mr. Barbound, called to testify a man by the name of Scott Jenkins, who is an investigator for the Division of Lottery. Okay? Pardon?
You want to get in, all?
Yeah, I do. Okay. Mr. Jenkins testified as Mrs. Simon just said. I've never met Mr. Jenkins. I, the only time I ever saw Mr. Jenkins was when I sat in his deposition. What he says someone else said, certainly not me, and Mr. Jenkins turns out to be a, an eternal whistleblower file. He's been let go by his state. He was not the investigator on that case, and I, and I think for you to bring that up and try to defame my reputation is wrong. Okay? But then I shouldn't expect any less from you. Anyone else?
Kowski, Delavan Avenue. I'm, at the understanding you are not to be speaking about personnel-related issues in a public setting, and I believe this case reflects that? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to close public comment.
I'll make a motion when you close.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Blumberg.
Yes.
Ms. Talby.
Yes.
Is there any public comment on second readings of ordinances or resolutions?
Sewell, 22 West Drive. Mayor, your undivided attention to Resolution 133. 133, Mayor. Are you there yet?
I'm there, John.
All right, Mayor. Did you happen to get a copy of your cohort, co-defendant, and co-conspirators breakdown of cost today?
Yes, we did.
Did you notice the ever-increasing additional service fees from the year 2009 to 2014? I assume these are calendar years. Your cohort didn't go to that degree to break it down, but the numbers are troubling, Mayor. But even more so, Mayor, are the other attorney fees.
Excuse me, one minute, John. Are you referring to, what document are you referring to?
It got documented, Madam Talby.
Okay. Thank you.
Your mayor should have a copy.
I do, somewhere.
He put it under miscellaneous circular file. Are we on the same document, Mayor?
We are, John. Yes, we are.
And we see numbers that go from 55, 93, and thus far for the calendar year 2014, we're seeing $27,980. But even more disturbing is in 2013, we see a spike of 171 on the other attorney fees. And I would assume a large chunk of that, 155,000, Mayor. Are we on that number yet? 155,000? $1,000, Mayor? Are we there yet?
We're there, John.
Okay. We have squandered $155,000 of taxpayer money on this, you know, douche chase of--
John, I'm not with you. Where's, where do you see 155?
Well, we're taking, we're extrapolating from 2013 over to the number 171. And we're making that quantum leap of faith, the quantum leap of faith, Mayor, that 155,000 of that money, taxpayers' hard-earned money, was squandered, squandered, because, because you, the mayor, and Commissioner Blumberg refuse to do what's right. Commissioner Talby, we don't need 122-page document on pay-to-play. We need something that's less than a few lines, less than a paragraph. We need an ordinance that you should introduce that bans any and all pay-to-play, including services and kind. Do that, so we can save 155,000. And then I wouldn't be upset by the solicitor's additional service charges. I would say, hey, he deserves it. He's a great attorney. But I don't agree with that 171,000, of which 155,000 is due to the mayor's gross incompetence, gross ineptitude, and his stonewalling of a pay-to-play ordinance. I want to see that ordinance introduced, and I'll even write it for you, Madam Talby. I'll write it for you. Let's see if you have the intestinal fortitude, that backbone, to do something that's right for a change and to save the taxpayers $155,000 thus far. The 155,000, Madam Talby, is only the tip of the iceberg, only the tip of the iceberg.
15 seconds, John.
You know what else we're staring down besides the 155, Mayor?
What, John?
We're staring down the original sweet spot number that could have made us far cheaper in the long run. That's roughly around 3K, I'm assuming, assuming. But we're wasting money, Mayor, and it's not the time to be doing it with an election staring us in the face. So let us not waste any more money and do what is right, because then I won't quibble with the solicitor's additional surcharges and additional services. But I would like at some point to see the contract, because if we're paying for services not specified in the contract, I would like to see the specifics of the contract to ascertain whether or not they are within the contract or full outside the contract. And we should be careful about where we're spending money, not only for the additional services of our solicitor, but for other attorney fees. These numbers are not sustainable, particularly this $171,000. And I don't want to--
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mike, I have a question. This document that he referred to, that he has in his possession, was at the table when I got here. Where, where did it come from?
At the last meeting, I said I was going to provide the legal fees for the last five years, and it came from Lisa McLaughlin.
You, was this authorized by the, by our solicitor or our business administrator that we were going to pay? There's proprietary information in the year. How could this have gotten out? I don't understand how this, this got out.
There's nothing proprietary in here.
Oh, I, I beg to differ--
I think our legal fees are, it's public business. Why would we want to hide, hide that?
It's, it's not so much our legal fees, Brenda, it's the fact that case by case with, with people's names are here, at best they should, I think, and I'm not an attorney, they should have been redacted. But now, you, you absolutely am, again, I'm not a lawyer, and I hope that this just goes away, we've, without, and you didn't, did you solicit anybody's opinion on whether or not this was a document we could pass out to the public? To the, did you talk to Rich? Did you talk to Dave? Did you talk to Scott? Did you talk to Tom? Or did you talk to Rosie before you decided to pass this document out to the public? That's my question. I, I'm very concerned about this.
All right.
Mike, I, this is a serious matter, in my opinion.
And you gave, you did give copies to the--
Rich, I, I, I'm, I'm going to ask you to look into this. I, I think we've got a, a serious violation here. I really do.
Okay. Rich says he'll do that. Rich, will you do that?
Excuse me?
Will you, you will do that?
I will. I, I don't, if I have one, I just got it tonight.
Maybe somebody out there can give you that.
I, I was aware that Commissioner asked the Finance Director for information. I have not seen this particular document.
Wow. You have? Okay. Anyone else, public comment, please? Resolutions and ordinances--
Correct.
Correct.
134 and 135. Dan Gottlieb for 7 North Nassau. For whoever got 134 and 135 on the agenda as a resolution, I commend you. I urge you to unanimous, unanimously, approve 134 and 135. I hope that in conjunction with 134 and 135, that much like Solicitor Abbott pressed for on the dredging issue, a game plan, I hope that you follow up unanimous passing of 134 and 135 with a game plan that will include a letter to the state letting them know, informing them that we have reached out to outside counsel in our effort and our attempt to support the non-binding referendum that was supposed to give this commission direction on whether or not to join the Upsekin Island Shore Protection Plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Sharon Simon, 424 North Thurlow Avenue. The issue of that document, you know, this is not the first time Commissioner Talby has put her own little things out there that she wants people to see.
Sure. Resolutions--
So, in terms, it's a resolution, it's that document, could we please have a policy that anything that's put out on the table to give out as a public document from this commission is approved by the appropriate people? And Commissioner Blumberg can't just put out what he wants, and Mayor can't put out what he wants, and Commissioner Talby can't put out what she wants. That's all I'm asking. Please, for the protection of yourselves and for our money, please. She shouldn't be using that as her way to, whatever she does. Okay? As far as 134 and 135, could someone please provide us a little information on why we're looking at two different attorneys and why those two attorneys, just to educate us a little bit on what you're about to vote on?
Would you like to do that rationale, Scott, please?
Well, I think Commissioner Blumberg recommended one, and Mayor Becker recommended the other, and Commissioner Talby, I guess, stuck with me. I don't know, but--
Commissioner Talby, why didn't hear that? Commissioner Talby?
Mr., Commissioner Talby, I guess, stuck with me.
Oh, stuck with you?
I guess.
Oh, God.
I don't know, but that's, we got two things. But that's, that we had two names.
All three attorneys, all three commissioners were asked to submit names.
Okay.
And they were all, they all had the opportunity to do so, and two of them chose names.
Okay.
So they could submit one, or three, or five, or whatever number of names they wanted to. And the ones that they submitted, between last meeting and this meeting, both Scott and I called together, we were both in the room, we both made the calls together.
We did a conference call, spoke to both of them at length.
Thank you.
And that's how it came about.
Thank you. Well, I do want to thank the commission. I hope you do vote on it, and I think it is a good idea, since the costs are so low, to get two opinions because this is not like an easy thing to look at. It's complicated, it's very political, and it's, it's big. So thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Solicitor and Mr. Dini for your role in it. And I know that a lot of the voters appreciate it, so thank you.
Any other public comment on resolutions or ordinances? Is our motion closed?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
Tom?
Ordinance 2014-25, second reading, fixing the salaries and wages and compensation of certain officers and employees.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
Ordinance 26, amends Chapter 257 vehicles and traffic for handicap parking on North Canyon.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
Then we added Ordinance 27, first reading, amending our sign, I believe it's Chapter 175, but we'll double-check that with Ruben, as previously reported by Ruben, for sign amendment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
Resolution 127, approved claims and payroll.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
128, approved payment to Coldmark, $1,098 to 11.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Blumberg?
Yes.
Ms. Toby?
Yes.
129, authorize a bicycle auction on July 19th.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
130, renews liquor licenses for the 2014-15 term.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
131, appoints Jim Magnin as tax assessor for a four-year term beginning July 1.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Ms. Toby?
Yes.
132, rejects bids for the purchase of the tractor received on April 24th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Ms. Toby?
Yes.
133, reappoints John Scott Abbott Solicitor for a period of one year, $50,000 annually.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes, and thank Scott for the hard, all the hard work that he puts in for the city of Margate.
Ms. Toby?
Yes.
134, award professional service contractor Eli Oskin for work related to the state federal share protection project.
Make that motion.
With comment, can we put in their, their opinion if we can receive it within 30 days?
I don't think we can without talking to them, Brenda. I, I mean, I think it's a good idea to try and get it as fast as we can, but I don't think we can modify that and demand a 30-day turnaround without asking them first.
I just asked Scott about it at work session, and he didn't think it would be a problem.
It might not be a problem, but-
They know we need it quickly.
Fine.
Now, whether it be 31 days, or 40 days, or 20 days, I, we will press upon them-
Good.
-sooner rather than later.
That's good by me.
Okay.
So we're not going to put down a time limit at all?
Well, what happens, and it just, let's think about this. What happens if they don't give it to us in 30 days? Then we don't accept it? Let's say we get it 32 days later. Does that mean it's invalid then? I mean, I just would rather-
I'm just thinking that time is of the essence if the, if the, you know, if the army-
Put that in there. Time is of the essence.
Time is of the essence. They will know that.
We can put that in there.
We can notify them tomorrow.
Okay. Why don't we make a phone call tomorrow, Scott?
Well, let's put it in there. Time is of the essence. Cool.
Just leave it as in it is. I, I vote yes.
135 is-
Did we all vote yes on that?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
135 is awarding to Louis Goldshire for the same project.
I make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes, and time is of the essence.
136, approves Chapter 159 for the insertion of a clean communities grant, $26,915.74.
I make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
137, authorizes tax redemption, lien redemption for Block 311, Lot 21.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Ms. Toby?
Yes.
138, authorizes application for a grant TA 214 for Ventura D Street Gate.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
139, authorizes a change order number four to the 2012 road prurient reduction of $8,270.94.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
140, authorizes change order number one final, the bulkhead repairs of Sumner Avenue, reduction of $22,907.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Ms. Toby?
Yes.
141 adopts the seasonal employee manual.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Ms. Toby?
Yes.
142 adopts, as previously discussed, the green purchasing policy for the city of Margate.
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Blumberg?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
And 143, authorizes executive session per NJSA 10:4, potential litigation, employee involved in dispute with Dave's work as a seasonal employee.
I, I thought we, I didn't know that we were going to go into executive session. Did you receive my email, everybody, about, I mean, I think it's a decision that Scott needs to make.
I think it's a commission decision.
I think it's a legal decision, but we can talk about that in executive session.
Okay.
I'm sorry.